Welcome to the February ninth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us, please. Commissioner Chip Pinion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Chip.
Much praise. Father, we thank you as a state for your love for us and thank you for bringing us here tonight. Conduct the business of accounting, Father, we ask you to give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we need to assess what's before us tonight and help make the best decisions for all of our people. Father, we ask you to be with our leaders tonight, in our nation, between your state, your county, your city, Father, Jesus. Anoint them, bless them, Father, help them, and in thy guidance and direct us, Father, in each and every day. We thank you most of all tonight for giving us a trial here, and we ask you to be with us, give us safe travels, and back to our respective homes tonight. Thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, in his name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gal.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Steve Sandlin. Mike Bott. Jeff Phillips.
President. Thank you, Gal. At this time, we need to approve our, the minutes for our January twelfth and twenty-sixth meeting, and I'll call on our vice chair, Mike Kush.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes of the last meeting, and I've already been over and made a motion to accept them.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve? And a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, any items withdrawn, Doug?
No, sir. Everything's still on there.
Thank goodness. We've only got one item, so we'd probably have to go home. Item number six, it looks like, zoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. Item A, Jeffrey D. Turner. The item number is fifteen dash A zero zero four. The location is thirty-one forty-seven Franklin Road, Old Fort Parkway. The county commissioner is Trey Gooch. The size of the site is approximately point three-two acres. Tax map nine-twenty, group A, parcel fourteen. Existing zoning is RM, residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is OP, office professional. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this property is located along Old Fort Parkway or Franklin Road, as it's more commonly known in the county. It's located on the southern edge. You have a copy of these maps in your agenda material. There's also a copy on the screen in front of you today. Uh, you can see it's the area here outlined in red. The property had a single-family unit on it in the past, but it was removed as part of the widening for Franklin Road several years ago. Uh, the current size of the property is slightly over twelve thousand square feet, which makes this a non-conforming lot in the RM zone. The RM zone does require a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, the applicant proposes to purchase this property, or actually, I think he already owns it, but he wants to combine it with the property immediately adjacent to it. There's an existing office building and business right here. Essentially, what they're wanting to do is to combine it with that and then use it for additional parking. Uh, they've got a, a, a small parking area here in the back, but they'd like to expand their parking area here into this new property. Uh, they have submitted a concept plan. It doesn't necessarily show the exact layout of the parking lot. Again, that's in your agenda materials as well. Uh, they are looking at access to the existing parking area over here and then a additional, an additional parking, I'm sorry, additional access point out here to Franklin Heights Drive. Uh, quite frankly, we find that preferable than another access point onto Franklin Road. If this zoning application is approved and this development does go forward, they will have to do some buffering along this southern property line here. Uh, OP to RM would be considered a type-one buffer. That's our least dense buffer of the three types that we have. Uh, fencing, uh, landscape materials, anything can be used for that, provided it meets our ordinance requirements. If they do use a fence, they can reduce the minimum amount of buffering that is required. I believe it's a minimum fifteen foot, but with a, a solid visual screen can go down to seven and a half feet. Uh, staff did receive a phone call or two about this. Uh, some representatives, a representative from Franklin Road Baptist Church across the street, uh, did call. Just kind of curious about the request. Uh, said they didn't have any issues with it. And, uh, besides that, uh, I don't recall, other than that one phone call, uh, there were some others. Nobody expressed any opposition to this request. There's no building, as, as far as any structure is concerned. They're really, they're just looking to do a parking lot. Just to give you a look of the surrounding area, this would be looking, uh, immediately adjacent. You can see the Lee Company trucks back there in the background. That's looking down Franklin Road. That'd be looking toward the west. Starting to look directly across the street. You can see Franklin Road Baptist Church. That's looking kind of, I guess that'd be northeast on, from the property. Looking back toward the east, you can see Gresham Lane there in the distance, and that's Franklin Heights Drive right there in the forefront. That's directly across the street and looking down Franklin Heights Drive. Uh, the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Hey, Doug, you're, uh, I couldn't see your cursor on the, uh, big screen. The adjacent property you're, you're talking about that they want to use for parking, i- is, well, I'm looking at one of the sheets that has a three-fourteen number designated in that lot. Uh, it's the one that's got the, uh, shows the, the water.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay.
Are you talking about the one oh-eight? That's, they're talking about?
No, no, sir. It'd be the one thirty-one sixty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Immediately adjacent to it.
Okay. Is that a driveway or an alley?
It's a driveway.
Okay. And that driveway services what property?
The, the, you're talking the one that's on the thirty-one sixty-seven?
Yes, sir.
That, that's the one that accesses that particular business?
Okay, so it, that's, it's just a driveway for that particular house?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. What is thirty-one eighty-five next to it? Is that still a residential property?
No, that, that's office professional as well. The next several properties, as you go to the west, are all zoned office professional.
Okay. And then the one directly across the street at Franklin Heights Drive?
Yes.
From this topo, it looks like that's just a vacant lot.
It is. There is, uh, and there's an existing, let me pull that picture back up here. You could, this is the, uh, the, there's a existing, this used to be a house in here. Of course, there's a driveway right in this area, and then there was a house here on the pad. Uh, cor- that was one of the ones, too, that was removed when they did the Franklin Road widening. It's, it's still zoned residential. This, uh, this structure right here, this accessory structure, when you look at the aerial photos, it looks like it's right on the property line. So, this isn't actually on the property, this property here. It's actually, that property line probably runs right parallel with that, uh, with that concrete there, roughly.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll declare the public hearing open for item number fifteen dash A zero zero four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Going once. Seeing no one, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there's, I'll make a motion, then we can discuss if need be, but, uh, I would agree with staff that this is very unlikely that that lot would ever be wanted to be a residential dwelling again, mainly because of the traffic and the location. So, I would make a motion to, uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve with staff comments?
Based on staff comments, yes.
And a second. Discussion.
I just had one question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Doug, tell me about that accessory parking on thirty-one sixty-seven. Did I hear that correctly? I mean, are, they're gonna do?
Well, essentially, what they want to do is make another parking area to serve the existing business. What they would do is combine the two lots together with, via subdivision plat- so it'd be one property. Now, granted, it'd be kind of an odd-shaped property, but they could add parking on that new area that they're asking for to?
So thirty-one sixty-seven is purchasing, I guess, the lot three-fourteen?
Yes.
And they're gonna make parking on three-fourteen basically is all they're doing on three-fourteen?
That is essentially, yes. That's all they're doing, Mr. Sir.
I'm, I'm cleared.
Other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number six B, amendments to the zoning ordinance pertaining to retreats. Item number is fifteen dash five zero zero one. The planning staff is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, at our last planning commission meeting during the daytime, staff brought to you some possible regulations for retreats. Uh, you recall, we discussed it a little bit in detail at the last meeting. Essentially, these type of uses, what we're calling retreats, it really started out as, uh, folks have been calling our offices fairly frequently. I think we had someone in our office just the other day, as a matter of fact, last week, asking about the possibility of buying a piece of property and then using an existing barn or possibly building a structure for, like, events, wedding venues, something like that. Currently, the way we regulate those, we regulate them as agritourism kind of uses. Most of the wedding venues and things like that that we had seen had been with existing farm operations, where they want to take a barn, they want to use the barn for a kind of a rustic-type environment for wedding. Apparently, that's becoming, uh, quite the trend, not just around here, but nationwide. There was an article not too long ago, I think it was, uh, one of the ma- the major national papers, like the New York Times or the Post, Washington Post, uh, regarding these type of structures. So, it's not just something that we're dealing with, you know. And I know there's other, it's my counterparts around the state, I know, are having, uh, questions about these as well. Well, the issue that we were running into was, we're starting to see these type uses wanting to go in areas that really aren't being used for agricultural purposes. They want to buy a large piece of property, and they want to put a structure there. They want to make it look like a barn or something like that, but really, there's no agricultural use for the property. At that point, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, in staff's opinion, to try to zone a piece of property for agricultural use to allow them to use it in a way when they're not really using the property in that manner for agricultural purposes. So, what we've come up with, we've done some research into these type of, of uses around the state and even some, uh, other areas around the country to come up with some regulations that we're calling a retreat. Uh, these regulations are included with your agenda packets. I'll go through them just briefly. Uh, the first thing we would do is we would classify them as a minimal impact facility, which would allow them by special exception in all the zones, with the exception of the, uh, mobile home park and the industrial zones. They would not be permitted in any of those three zones, but they'd be permitted by special exception in any other zone, which means they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They would not be allowed by right. The next item on there is the definition. It's a retreat, what we're going to define as a facility owned and operated by a non-governmental entity for the purpose of providing a rule setting in which temporary lodging, camping, and/or conferences, meeting, and event facilities are provided with or without compensation. Not including activities which are allowed with a temporary use permit in the zoning ordinance already, such as a seasonal attraction, like a corn maze, something like that, outdoor performances, firework vendors would be another example. The actual regulations themselves, the application for the retreat would have to include all of those listed items right there. I won't go through them all, but you can kind of see what they are, the number of events, expected number of attendees, those kind of things. And we are proposing the following standards for minimum acreage, ten acres. And, and I know we've had some discussion about that at the last meeting. I've got a couple of displays here. We'll, we'll go over here in just a few moments. Uh, parcels would have to have an unobstructed frontage along a public road, consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, essentially a fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way, or accessing a right-of-way, a fifty-foot strip accessing a right-of-way. We would not allow access drives on private easements. We have no, so those have become, those could become problematic. They would require site plan approval, consistent with our zoning ordinance. We place a maximum floor area for all areas used in connection with the retreat, excluding if they have, like, ordinate accommodations, like a, a camping area or something like that. Uh, would be no greater than twenty thousand square feet. Uh, accessory uses can include, but are not limited to banquet facilities, recreational amenities, which are not intended to be open to the general public. In other words, just for the people using that event, or using that facility for that event. Uh, uses approved shall abide by the parking requirements found in section eleven oh-two. One of the things that we do, we have struggled with in the past on these, is do we require the parking area to be paved? Most commercial uses, pretty much all of them, are required to have a paved surface, or what the ordinance calls a, a hard surface, dustless material, which typically is asphalt. Sometimes it's concrete. With these type of uses, since they're trying to maintain kind of a rustic-type look to the area, uh, we did discuss it with staff and said, okay, not necessarily that you have to pave, however, we want the ability to be able to approve what it is that you're gonna do. Maybe it's grass pavers. Maybe they just want to gravel, pea gravel, something like that. Uh, so staff would have the ability to work with the applicant on that. If we could not reach an agreement, the Board of Zoning Appeals would have the authority to determine that material to be used. Uh, we do require, though, the handicap parking would have to be of a hard dustless surface and meet ADA standards. Uh, the maximum length of stay for any guest would be fourteen consecutive days. That's also the same regulation we use for our current bed-and-breakfast regulations. We thought that would be a, uh, consistent with what we already had on the books. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals has the ability to condition approval upon adequate landscape screening on a case-by-case basis. Some properties will have a lot of existing material out there. No screening would really be necessary. Others may be kind of on a wide-open parcel, but rather than just say you have to meet a type X buffer, we thought the BZA would be better positioned to determine that on a case-by-case basis with staff's direction. Uh, events shall comply with the performance standards. Those are dealing with lighting, noise, those type of things that are already in our ordinance. Signage, again, should comply, shall comply with chapter twelve, the existing ordinances that we have on the books. Uh, this was something that we felt was very important. Proposed and existing instruct- existing structures, excuse me, are to, are to be built to the current building and fire codes and inspected prior to occupancy by both the building codes, department, and the fire and rescue departments. Of course, this is, next one's kind of a catch-all. All regulations enforced through other agencies, be they federal, state, or other local authorities, must be met, and those could include anything, again, like building codes, fire codes, groundwater protection, et cetera. Uh, this next item deals with, uh, the possibility of maybe having to have an additional address. If there's existing residents on the site, it might make more sense to have the facility used for the retreat have a separate address. That's something, again, on a case-by-case basis. Uh, all parking activities and whatnot also would have to meet a setback of a hundred feet. Now, there are a couple of, I'm not sure how well that's coming up up here. Um, let me unzoom here just a little bit. We have a couple of sta- or exhibits here that I, that are on your tables as well. I'll start out with the ten-acre. There we go. Let me just unzoom here. Okay, this is a ten-acre parcel, and I'm gonna go ahead for the sake of disclosure. This is actually property that my family owns out there on Whitest Road. I have no intention of actually building any of the facility like this. It's just, we were looking for a ten-acre parcel. This is ten-point-oh-one. You're not gonna get any closer to that than really being right on the dot, and it's fairly symmetrical as far as the use is concerned. So, just, again, just so everybody knows, that, yeah, this is actually property we own. This kind of shows you what the setbacks would look like. Of course, this outer line here, this outer red line, is the property line. This green line, and I don't know how well that shows up, up here, but on your tables where it is, the, the green line is a fifty-foot setback from all lines. The one in the middle, that orange line, is seventy-five foot, and that purple line on the interior is a hundred feet. And you can see on here, with a hundred-foot setback, you still have four-point-oh-three usable acres. With a seventy-five, you've got five-point-two-five, and then with a fifty-foot, you've got six-point-six-three acres. So, that's kind of given you what the usable land is for those. Now, on a five-acre track, now, there was some discussion about maybe limiting that to a five-acre, or reducing the minimum lot size from ten to five acres. You can see this is a, and I, I don't know whose property this is, but, uh, again, the green line's fifty, the orange in the middle seventy-five, and, uh, the purple line's a hundred foot. Uh, a little more restrictive in this one, just because, A, it's a smaller piece of property. With a fifty-foot setback, you are getting the use still two-point-eight-nine acres of the property. Uh, seventy-five feet, you'd be looking at two-point-one. A hundred feet, you're looking at one-point-four-four usable acres for the actual retreat, uh, facility. So, that's, uh, basically staff's presentation. Uh, there are actually a couple more things. The parking requirements, we would require one space for every three people at maximum capacity of the main assembly room, plus one space for every guest room or campsite, if there is one. We also received a copy, or a phone call earlier from someone who was interested in the topic and, uh, who lives near an existing facility. Apparently, they, uh, the people who are using the event hall had some sort of a power outage, but there was nobody there with the facility that was helped, that could help them, so somebody actually showed up at this person's house and asked them if they could, or if they knew how to get ahold of the, the owner of the facility. It may not be a bad idea to add something in here, to say something, the effect of, you know, contact information for the owner shall be placed on site, or something like that, just in the event that the owner is needed, that there's a way to contact them. That way, if there's any people in the surrounding area, you know, they don't have to necessarily go to the person's house and ask them. I don't think they necessarily minded that it happened. It was just something that, uh, it was a good point that was brought up. So, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Doug. Jim?
Doug, I, I want to talk about the maximum length of stay for guests shall be fourteen consecutive days. Is there a limit to the number of guests, that overnight guests that are there at any one time?
We're not proposing one. Uh, chances are, they would have to provide accommodations for however many people were there. I mean, if that's something you want to look into, we could, but we had not proposed to put a limit.
There a limit to the number of nights per year that?
Not as written.
That they can have guests there?
Not as written. Now, again, that would be part of the, they would identify a lot of that during the application process. You know, 'cause, uh, some of the information we do ask for is the number of events per year, uh, expected number of attendees, you know, are there provision of overnight accommodations, duration, et cetera? You know, those are the kind of things we would like to see, uh, on the front end. Now, they could say, well, we're gonna be open ten months out of the year, you know, for overnight accommodations, uh, like a campsite or something like that, but, uh, that doesn't mean that one person could stay there that entire time. They would have to limit their stay to fourteen days. But beyond that, we weren't proposing to put any limits in there.
I suppose my, my concern is a retreat essentially becoming a motel, uh, at some point, which could have twenty or thirty guests every night, year-round. I think that would become, be more of a commercial use than a temporary retreat. And I don't know exactly how to define that or prevent that.
I mean, that's a very valid, that's a good question. It's a valid point. All I would be able to say at this point is, again, we weren't proposing to regulate that necessarily, but that would be something that we would want to show, them to show us on the front end of their application. Before I went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they say, well, we're just gonna be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You know, we may look at that and say, okay, that's probably not really what we had in mind for these type of uses. You know, we're thinking more along the lines of more temporary, and the board would have the ability to, to limit those kind of things.
Perhaps, uh, we could put a restriction on the number of nights per year, the, that a retreat is you? I, I don't know. Maybe that's too restrictive for some cases. You don't, you know, but... I, I just hate to see something become a long-term, every-night facility next door to me, anyway, and sure, anybody would have the same concerns if they're in a rural area.
Right. I mean, that's?
Would it be possible, Doug, just to tie those fourteen days to a singular event?
I think we could do that. Yes, sir.
Could we do that, Jim?
Once, yeah. I think we could just change that wording. Maximum length of stay of any guest shall be fourteen consecutive days per singular event, or, you know, the similar wording that, that you suggested, Mr. Chairman. I think that would work.
Doug, what's your? What's your question for us tonight? I mean, is it, are you, are we misogynizing this right now, or are we, we, we giving you an answer, a motion on the floor, you know, later or something here?
Well, we'd like, staff would like to move this forward. Uh, based on the discussion we had, I know we had some questions about the lot size and the setback, so we've done a little bit of, of research into that. Um, you know, if we can work those items out tonight, I think we're ready for, uh, you know, a motion, from staff standpoint, ready for a motion tonight, and move this forward to the Board of Commissioners next month.
Doug, is?
Yes, sir.
Doug, are we, are we talking here, uh, wedding chapels, uh, a place for church groups, parties, graduation parties, picture-taking places?
Anything like that. Anything like that. We didn't want to limit it to just wedding events, but anything that you just mentioned right there would work, would be considered this type of use.
All right, on, on a twenty thousand square feet, is that if somebody had a three-bedroom log cabin at twenty-five-hundred? Is this twenty thousand take, and, and they had a wedding chapel also on the same piece of property? Is that, is that a combination to twenty thousand that on two different?
Well, it depends what they're using for the events. If they, let's say the people live in the log cabin that you're talking about, but they really don't use it for the events necessarily, they wouldn't count that. The only time, only thing they're counting with, as far as the twenty thousand square feet is concerned, are those facilities being used for?
Well, it could be. I mean, if you have a wedding, people like to stay in, in their cabin.
Right.
So, if, if it's a wedding event, it would probably be in a combination of. I hadn't thought about what you thought about camp, uh, retreat for camping area. That's what you were talking about, camping, wasn't it?
Well, right. Now, I will say that the regulations, using what your example is, the regulations as they're written would not count the area for overnight accommodations. So, the twenty thousand square feet would count the area they have, the event, like if it's a wedding or a reception or something like that, but the cabin itself, where they were staying overnight, would not count as part of that.
All right, the, uh, expected number of attendees per event, uh, if I told you that I had a wedding chapel and I expected fifty people, well, that would, that, that gets over here to about sixteen parking places, correct?
Yes, roughly.
Right? I know some of these places have used grass parking. If you, if you got grass, you got grass parking. Uh, the hours of operation, do we have a requirement on that, or do we have to set that?
We're not proposing requirement for hours of operation, and I think the reason, one of the reasons we really didn't was, well, first of all, just from a matter of enforcement. Uh, you know, it's difficult to enforce hours of operation on any business, just because we're not out there. The second thing is, again, that's part of what we're asking for on the front end, but we also put the, and we also put the requirement there that it has to meet the, uh, performance standards in the zoning ordinance from a noise standpoint. I mean, that would probably be the big thing, noise and lighting. If there's lighting, you know, they have to submit a lighting plan, showing us that they're not gonna have, you know, over, I think it's point-oh-one foot candle at the property line. And for noise, there are noise limits, depending on what time of day it is, you know, daytime versus nighttime. There are noise limits, which can be measured through a decibel meter. So, that's why we just kind of stayed out of the hours of operation part of it, but still require them to meet those standards in the ordinance.
So, if it goes to BZA, they would be setting that, right?
Well, I guess they could. That, that, the BZA does have the ability to place reasonable conditions upon a special exception request. Uh, it's just, there's no requirement in here that they have to be open no later than, say, nine o'clock in the morning. They can be open no later than ten o'clock at night. We didn't propose that in here. But I think on a case-by-case basis, the board could look at that and say, okay, you're a lot closer to some residential areas than maybe another one would be. You know, you, you're near neighborhoods, maybe number, number, letter A is near neighborhoods, letter B maybe is in the middle of, you know, a rural area. There's hardly anybody around them. They may be more comfortable saying, you have some limits on your hours of operation on this one because of the fact that you're more, uh, closely proximity to existing residential areas than another application. So, I think they would have that ability to do that.
Provision of restroom facilities, uh, I'm assuming the restroom facilities is gonna be a requi- requirement other than porta-potties, is that?
Yes, I mean, they would have to show us what they're proposing to do. It could be, it could be that, you know, one event, if it's just gonna be for a few hours one day, that's probably more than likely what they would do, is, is bring in portalets.
Security. We requiring security, or is that?
Well, I don't know if we're necessarily requiring it. We just want to know what their proposal is for those things. I mean, these are things we want to see on the front end while making an evaluation of their application. You know, is it gonna be a free-for-all? Are they gonna have people there who are able to maintain, or I'm not saying they have to provide, you know, like an off-duty sheriff's office or something like that, but they need to be aware that, you know, there are events. Sometimes things may get out of hand, and they need a, a plan in place to deal with that.
The, what's confusing here is, I'm looking, I'm looking at a wedding chapel event, but then I'm also looking at somebody, you've got a cabin that you're renting. And a lot of these, I've got a chalet I've been renting out for eight or ten years now. Nobody's stayed over three days. Stay on weekends. I've had a few that about to stay a week. Never had, never had anybody for that length of time. But when you get in that camping area, like, that you were talking about, that does shed some more. That's a little different than renting a cabin to somebody.
I mean, if you'd be more comfortable with the timeframe, again, we use fourteen days 'cause that's what we had for the bed-and-breakfast already in our ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think that's okay. I think that's, I think that's fine.
I was just gonna say, if we wanted to, I mean, we could put that down to seven, and I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I think that'd be appropriate. 'Cause I think you're right. Most of the overnight accommodations with these, I mean, we're not looking at it as a situation where, uh, it's a destination in one sense, but it's a destination because they're there for the, whatever event is there. They're not just going there. It's not like a bed-and-breakfast. It's not meant to be like that. So, if you wanted to lower this down to seven days, you know, somebody wants to have a week-long retreat at a facility, and they want to have the ability to have some people stay overnight, I don't think that's inappropriate. I think we could do that.
The, um, uh, the, the lot size is that, I, I've looked at some of these. I've got a, I've got a place that I've been toying about building a wedding chapel for years on. I've got, I've got a place that I've been toying about building a wedding chapel for years on it, and it's about, it's 30 or 40 acres in this, in this section. But I looked at some, and I, I looked at one this past week. This lady's got, she's got a nice facility, and it's only on two acres. If, if, if you require a 100-foot setback, and you've got, we require 10 acres or five acres, and say the lots are not perfectly shaped like this, and people are looking for, in the country, lots that, that they may be a meandering-type lot, and, and they may have a stream here, and they may have woods here, and say that it's only 250 feet wide, well, if they're going to build a 50 by 50 building, they can't because of the way the lot's configured. So, I, I think, you think about the setbacks to 50 anyway, and I, and I, I still guess, I don't know about the lot size. I don't, because all lots are not configured like this.
Right, and I mean, I understand that we're just trying to give you a couple of examples. I mean, you're right, there, we picked two that we knew were at least symmetrical just to give you an idea. But yeah, you start introducing, you know, irregular lot lines, it's going to have an impact on your usable area. It probably won't be as much as you would see, there wouldn't be as much usable area on like a five-acre tract that was irregularly shaped that it would be here. So, you're right with that.
Doug, Craig, Craig has addressed a que, would BZA, if, let's take the perfectly, or almost perfectly square example you've got up there. Would BZA, if it's practical to put the parking in the back, maybe the same landowner, two different tracts, or, or it's all wooded behind, would BZA have the ability to alter the setbacks to, to match each case?
Well, they could ask, the, the applicants would have to ask for a variance at that point. The BZA wouldn't be able to vary the setbacks unless the regulation specifically called out their ability to do that. I'm, I don't know if I'm real comfortable with that. I'd rather stick with, if we think 100 foot's too much, then fine, I think we should just reduce it. But I don't think the BZA, I don't really want to put them in a position where they have to gauge each individual one as far as, well, you can have 10 foot, and then another guy comes up, we're going to give you 20. Well, you gave him 10, why are you giving me 20, kind of a thing. I don't, I don't want to be in that type of situation with them.
Second question I've got, I mean, if you're allowing camping, and you're doing it for a week or two weeks, I have, I have this fear that this would lead to KOAs and pup tents, you know, and this kind of a permanent camping facility.
Right.
Are we doing that?
No, I, I don't believe we are, just because the overnight accommodations are accessory to the use of the facility. It's not meant to be a standalone use. Maybe we need to clarify that a little more in the regs, just to make it sure that-
Do that, I'd be, I'd, I'd have a whole lot more comfort with it.
Make sure that, yes, sir, that, yeah.
I don't want it to lead to that downside.
Right, and neither do we, because we have separate regulations for campgrounds. So, if somebody were to say, well, we just want to use this for a campground all the time, and we like these regulations, we're going to go by them, we would say, well, no, you have to go by the campground regulations. But I think it'd probably be a good idea to stress in here that overnight accommodations are accessory to the events going on at the facility, and not to be used as a standalone event in and of itself.
I would have more comfort with it if you would cut the days down to, I, I think, 14 days is pretty long time. You know, I think we wanted an exception. I guess they could kind of get it maybe or something.
That's, that's perfectly fine.
What about existing structures, those that already have a barn or a place on their property?
Yes.
That doesn't fall into the setback requirements, like it's, it's already on the backside of the property line? How would we deal, you know, potentially deal with those?
Well, I think at that point, I think they would have to ask for a variance going forward, because an agricultural structure is exempt from setback requirements. Once you turn that into, let's say, something like this, there's setback requirements that take effect now. Now, the structure was already there. In that sense, it's non-conforming. But the change, it, it wasn't legally established as that type of use. It was legally established as a barn. So, if they were going to come in and want to use this existing structure, of course, they're going to have to put it up, build it up to building code, fire code, and all that, but I think they would have to ask for a variance to the setback requirement at that point from them.
And I've seen a couple of those where they're right on the property line that exists, and as long as we allow for that variance, I, I think that's, that's fine. I think 100 foot may be just a little too much as well, the, the setback. I tend to feel more comfortable something maybe in the middle, but not against 50 either, but...
Doug, I had a couple of comments also, some good questions there, some thoughts that I had as well. Is this kind of taking out a mini Bonnaroo or something like that? I mean, it's your open-air concert type thing. I mean, at your very beginning, not intended to be an open general public, not, not intended to be open to the open general public. So, I mean, is that, I'm thinking about a amphitheater type thing or, or something like that where, you know, in some events we've, or I've been to, have, have been these private-type invitation things, but there's been like an introduction to the property, or there's maybe a new country band or something that's just now getting started, and they make a little debut at, at one of these event-type facilities. And so, it's an, it's an amphitheater type thing. I mean, they'd hold a little concert and a little, you know, barbecue-type thing and come out and enjoy and, and listen to the band and, 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 you know, type situation like that. That's a question I'm asking about. I'm, I've fallen to the same line about the 100-foot setback, and I guess I'm thinking of all the different event things that I've either been associated with, or my wife's been associated with, or, or something in the catering business type thing. You know, most of these things have been existing, so it falls in with his question about the existing barns have been retrofitted into a, an event center type thing for a wedding, or a party, or a, or whatever, family reunion, get-together thing, or whatever. So, existing buildings might need to be tweaked into this system. But, you know, I feel sure if one of these things is proposed, then, you know, the, the house is going to be filled with that, those folks that are surrounding this piece of property as, as far as this being changed to an event center, wherever it may be, are going to be here to either be for it or against it, of course, for the public hearing. But this, if they fall in the requirements, then it couldn't, it, it may not be a public hearing then to, to be heard about it. And I think these things are, they are popping up, but to put it in a 10-acre requirement too, I'm not really got the warm and fuzzies about that neither, you know. I think a, a good event center can be on five acres or so, or, or something like that, if it's designed right or in the right area, or whatever. So, just, just some uncertainties here I just wanted to throw out. That's what this is about, discussion, trying to get a, a good plan, whether we get one, we'll have to tweak it years on out anyways.
Right. Well, to answer your first question about the performances like an amphitheater or something like that, we've got regulations in the zoning ordinance now that deal with temporary permits for outdoor performances, be they outdoor plays, musical performances. Now, they're only allowed in commercial or industrial districts, and they can be part of an existing business or as a freestanding use. Of course, they have to have adequate parking, traffic circulation, those kind of things. Now, they are limited to 10:00 PM as far as that goes, but they are, there is something in, in the ordinance already dealing with just specifically outdoor performances and those type of things. Now, if somebody were to come in and want to do a full-time amphitheater, and that was all they were wanting to do, I don't necessarily think that would fall under these type of regulations, just based on that definition that we're proposing. Again, it provides a rule setting which temporary lodging, camping, or indoor conferences, meeting, or event facilities, I guess you could say it falls under event facilities, but that's not really what we're intending with, with this kind of a thing, the, the outdoor type events that you're referring to.
Right, well, I, you know, along those same guidelines, could this be a boxwell, you know?
Could be a what, I'm sorry?
Boxwell, you know, for the Boy Scouts?
Oh, yes.
You know, could this be s-
It could be something like that, yes, sir.
Something like that, where they're going and coming, you maybe have a, a main cabin that people check into, or you call into, or something, set events up or something. Maybe it's not strictly for that, but, and, and... Whenever I look, it's, you know, changes, regulation changes, like, I think of enforcement also. How are we going to enforce this or that, you know, with an open-in, an event center type thing? And you're, you basically can't do that on a, an event-per-event type enforcement. Your neighbors and people living beside you are going to be the enforcement. They're going to call you and let you know, you know, what the problem is, or, or whatever. So, that's just some concerns I have, and, and I do agree we need some regulations on these, because I think they are becoming more and more, whether it be the, the wedding event menu type thing, or the, you know, doing company events, you know, and, and doing things like this. But just trying to figure it out, and I know it's a tough, tough ordeal.
Doug, could we change or get the events down to something more specific, like wedding and party, or whatever staff's comfortable with, you know?
Are you talking in the definition?
In, in the definition up there at the top, you know, try to get it a little more specific to try to-
Just to make, what I, what I think would probably be-
Stop the theater from coming in under events. You said it, and that's what made me ask this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we could, we could change the wording. I think what I would rather do really would be to maybe further clarify the things that it doesn't include as opposed to the things that it does, maybe, just because I don't want to get it so specific that if we call it, if, that's why we stayed away from just calling it wedding venues, because if we just call it wedding venue, then somebody came in, like with the Boswell type situation, then I could say, well, I can't really apply that to that because nobody's getting married there, kind of a thing, so...
Yeah, somebody might want to just have a birthday party at one of those places.
Right, or if they want to have a facility where they have those kind of events, you know, that's, then I could say, yes, that falls under this. But, but yeah, let me, we can, we can certainly do that, see if we can't come up with a, a little more specific about what it doesn't include.
Doug, they use, they use a lot of these for just picture-taking, just strictly picture-taking. And that, what you've got set up there for them, for them to use, sort of like we're talking about two different things. I'm thinking cabins you could rent out. I'm thinking wedding chapels. I'm thinking parties that's, and, and, and... You brought up the camping. I, I don't know how we differentiate. I don't, the campings and wild parties, and I don't know if we just need a set of time at 10 or 10:30, and if the wedding goes past 10:30, you know how the party's going. So, they could start at 4 o'clock if they didn't have enough time. I don't know if we can establish a 10, 10:30 timeframe on it or what. Does, can we?
Be more specific?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can.
If I was coming in to get it approved, and my neighbors, I'd want them to say nothing, I'd want to tell them nothing after 10 or 10:30. I'd want them to know something, yeah.
I mean, we can, like I said, we, we wanted to stay away from that just more of the case-by-case thing, but if you're more comfortable with us putting an actual timeframe in there that events have to be done by 10:00 PM, we'll just use that as an example, I, I mean, there's no reason we couldn't add that in here. I mean, if that's what the commission's comfortable with, we could do that.
On the event part of it, Kent, if they established a time when they applied, and their neighbors were all right with it, then I'd be all right with it, you know. But like Craig said, if you're going past 11, you're, you're having a pretty good party. Now, that might be all right in some instances, so if they, on the application, put down the, the, you know, latest time-
Right, and we could say hours of oper, I mean, we have that on here, hours of operation. And then, you know, the board can, at that point, can say, because you're in a more residential area, there's a lot of houses around you, we feel more comfortable with 9, 10 o'clock. Where if you're in the middle of, you know, the unincorporated rural county area, you have like two houses within a mile of you, may not be as big of an issue there. You could go a little later. They may not have an issue with that.
Am I looking at this wrong? In my opinion, this is more or less piggybacking off the agricultural uses. This is for something that's not every night, that's not a full-blown, full-time business. You know, if somebody's got two acres and they want to do something six nights a week, that's up into the night. Now, in my opinion, they ought to go get it zoned appropriately for commercial use or whatever, just like any restaurant or bar or whatever would be, and stuff. So, yeah, I, I think we ought to restrict this fairly, fairly well. And if somebody wants something beyond that, they'd get its own commercial and do it like a full-bonified business, because somebody having eight weddings a year, or 10 weddings a year, or something like that, in, in a redone barn is one thing, but somebody could slip through the cracks here and have something out there, and they're partying six nights a week, and, you know, and, and we just have to enforce that, in my opinion. But it looks like if they want to get something that's more intensive than that, they could just come back and do a full-blown commercial zoning and, and do all that at that point in time.
Well, that, that's what the situation is, Commissioner. I mean, because these things are ending up being 40, 50 events a year, because it's every weekend. And then, if you throw a company event in, whether it be a Christmas party, or a, or, or training, you know, session for the sales staff or something, I mean, that's, that's what these places are ending up being. And it's, I mean, from the, I was just mentioning, you know, the cowboy boots and shorts and the shotgun and everything for the wedding, to the, you know, to the training session during the week for a, a company to get away out of the corporate-type, you know, hotel-motel setting to a more relaxed, blue jean. And let's, I mean, we can throw a PowerPoint up here and do a training session at, at this place and be more relaxed and have a burger for lunch or while we're doing the thing, and, and these, they, they're popping up everywhere. So, I, I agree with trying to get it done, but I just don't want to rush into anything. I know it's already been proposed out there, and, and we're trying to get through it. I'm not really in for hammering something down tonight. I, I'd like to do a little more work on this, and, and, you know, we, we get that trim down to where at least this committee's pretty happy with it, and then we'll throw it out there for the public in the public hearing thing and, and, you know, see what, what they say about it.
That's fine.
Doug, I got a, and Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. I, I like the idea that we come back next meeting with a list, maybe a little more specific about we can and can't do. All right. In, in paragraph two, dot two, I'm, I'm confused about the language here. It says parcels must have an unobstructed frontage view along a public road. Why would you want the view on the road to be unobstructed? Wouldn't you want it obstructed, like a buffer of trees to cut sound and noise down?
I think what we're, yes, sir. I think what we're going for there is ultimately what this part of the regulation there is, is intended to enforce is that we don't want to see a private easement being the way you get to one of these. We want them, we want the property to have 50-foot of unobstructed frontage along a public right-of-way, is what, what we're saying. I'm not saying from a screening standpoint.
Okay.
But, but what we're saying is, you know, we're in a private subdivision, private easements, you know, a lot of times it's a 50-foot private easement access to property. We're saying we don't want to see private easements to use in connection with this. We want it to have access to a public right-of-way.
This is more for safety in egress and ingress, in and out?
That's correct, yes, sir, yes.
It, it's not trying buffer from sound or-
No, sir, no.
That, that does make sense. I, I would, I would encourage you, as we're preparing for our next meeting, to review the county's noise ordinance times, because I would think we would want to mimic the evening hours if there's live music, or, well, anything that would be loud and obtrusive to a neighbor noise-wise, should follow the, the current ordinance for noise. And I thought it was at 10 o'clock.
Well, yeah, in our, we've got performance standards in here. Now, the, what you're, what you're referring to, the, the noise ordinance, I believe only that, that the county has its noise ordinance, I think only applies in subdivisions, if I'm correct.
Okay.
What we're talking about in here with the performance standards, which is on the, I'm not sure what the bullet number is really, but it's on the back of that, event shall conform to the performance standards of Section 1106, noise is one of them, and it does have decibel limits listed in there already.
Okay, because the 100-foot buffer to me is too much. I would be more inclined to adjust the buffers per each site based upon landscaping, trees, distance from your closest neighbor, or distance from the road. I think just a blanket X amount of feet could hurt and help folks. So, if, if my nearest neighbor's a quarter of a mile away, well, I don't, 100-foot buffer makes no sense to me. If your neighbor is 75 feet across your property line, then we would want some other kind of a buffer deal. So, I, I'm, I'm a little scared to just do a hard number and that be applicable for everybody. I think everybody should have a, a little look-see, and really, it depends on how close your nearest dwelling or neighbor would be, would be my main concern. And then, that would apply to the noise. You know, a, a wedding is quiet unless they have a live band or a DJ, and that should shut down, in my opinion, about the same time our evening ordinance or subdivision ordinance would take in place. I think they should coincide, but other than that, I'm good.
I have a question. Have we modeled this after another ordinance in another community that we've seen be successful, or- or is this just some ideas that we pull together?
Well, yes and no. Some of the things in here, we saw there was a, well, Williamson County, they use the term retreat, they call it actually rural retreat. So, some of these regulations in here are kind of patterned off of that. There was also like the application materials, all those, the information we want there under number one was an ordinance we saw, let me see if I can't put my hand on it real quick here. That's Williamson Counties. Okay, it is. It was City of Lake Elmo in Minnesota. There was a lot of, the application phase, we modeled off of that. But a lot of the, the language and things that we used did kind of come from Williamson County. Because, now, that being said, the, like the minimum lot sizes and things that we talked about, like in Williamson County, for example, stick out of here, might as well just go ahead and look at it. Williamson Counties regulations for these type of facilities, they actually broke it down into two different kinds. They had extensive and then they had limited. Basically, I think the big difference between them had to do with if you had overnight accommodations or not, extensive allowed them, limited did not. But the, a good example, rural retreats limited was a minimum lot size of fifteen acres. They did have a hundred-foot setbacks as well. Rural retreats, the extensive ones, were a minimum of twenty acres in size. We got the twenty thousand square feet actually from that particular ordinance right there and they had a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback ordinance. Now, we saw some that we looked at that their setbacks were even higher than that, like two, three hundred feet. So, when we picked a hundred feet, we thought we're actually kind of going lower than what we had seen out there. But, you know, based on the discussion we had tonight, I mean, I can understand, I mean, a hundred foot is quite a bit and, I mean, there's some good points. You know, a hundred foot doesn't make a lot of sense if your nearest neighbor is a quarter mile away. You know, it makes more sense if it's only, as Mr. Kush said, seventy-five feet. So, I mean, I understand, staff will need to really sit back and determine how we want to word that as far as the variable setback or maybe it's based on the type of buffering use or something like that, as Mr. Kush suggested. But, I guess that's a long way to answer your question, Ms. Allen, but it was kind of a little of both, you know.
Make me think of a second question. On the setback, we said they can't do parking or anything. Would there be any advantage to allowing parking, you know, in an area that's more, you know, allotted for the setback and then have the actual event venue be closer up?
I think you could do that. That would actually be consistent with how we handle setbacks in the ordinance anyway. You know, parking and those type things are allowed in the setback, it's just the buildings that aren't. So, I mean, that's something that we could certainly consider.
Doug, two issues here. The first one is I agree and would like to see very much that we have an opportunity for people to do these sort of retreats like we have in mind. My big concern is going to be that these, over time, morph themselves into something that's more suitable in a commercial area and that's where the hard part of it is figuring out how you're specific enough to prevent that from happening. That in mind as we fine-tune this, please.
Yes, sir.
Second thing on the setbacks, is there any requirement for landscape buffers on retreats? Because I'm thinking if they've got our type-three buffer, our, or our most dense buffer, then I could live with a smaller setback. If there's no sort of buffer required at all there and it's just an open field, then I would feel more comfortable with a bigger setback. Or is my thought becoming too complicated?
Well, I think it's just a matter of determining how would be the best way to handle that. A type, our ordinance, we have three type, three buffer types, type one, type two, and type three. Type one requires an average buffer width of fifteen feet and then, I won't get into all the plant materials. Type two is thirty feet and then a type three is fifty feet. Now, each one of those has different plant material requirements and if you use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence, you can actually cut the amount of plantings that you have to use, I think, in half and then you don't have to do shrubs as well. So, there are ways to reduce the amount of buffer material, even the minimum buffer width. If you use a solid visual screen, you essentially cut every one of those buffer widths in half is what you do. So, now, that being said, you know, you may, you may have people that are okay doing more of a landscape buffer, maybe not a fence, just because they feel the fence would kind of take away from the rural nature of what they're trying to do. Let staff think about that a little bit. I'm not ready to sit here and say I've got an answer to that. It's a good question. I think it requires a little bit of pondering on our part. To answer your other question, as far as it morphing into something, I totally agree that that has the potential to happen with these type of uses, which is why we wanted them to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get special exceptions based on the application materials that they submit to us. If they submit to us saying, we're going to have this many events a year, this many attended, number of attendees, number of employees, these are the things that we're going to have, in two years, we find out, oh, they're doubling up everything, you know, they said they're only going to have, you know, we'll throw out a number, ten events per year, now they're at twenty, twenty-five. We're only going to have, you know, a maximum of a hundred people, we're having three, four hundred. That goes above and beyond the scope of what they were approved for. At that point, they're in violation of their approval. So, they can either A, scale back, B, go back to the board and ask for an expansion at that point, or see if they decide, we're just going to keep doing, we're not going to do anything, then we would have the ability to enforce our ordinances, revoke their permits, you know, and take them to court if need be. So, but I agree with you. I do think it does require monitoring, but at the same time, I think the best monitoring will be the neighbors in the area who can let us know if there's something not going quite right with what they had approved to begin with.
Doug, I don't have a problem with the, if you, with the hundred-foot setback for the buildings, it may be a fifty-foot setback for the parking, you know, and allow the parking in the in-between area there. And it becomes less restrictive. It keeps the building and the facility or the camping maybe a hundred feet off. I think that'd be all right.
What we could do from a staff standpoint before our next meeting, we can come up with several options for you to take a look at. I mean, you've all brought some really good points tonight and it's, you know, we want to go back and kind of regroup and sit down, take a look at this and see how we can incorporate a lot of these ideas into the ordinance. But, you know, we'll come up with some options as far as, you know, if you reduce the setback but allow this kind of buffering, you can have the parking in this area, maybe not this close, but you can park within, you know, if the setbacks are seventy-five feet, you can have your parking in part of that, you know. We'll come up with several options for you to take a look at.
Doug, for those dozens of people that already have facilities like this, particularly wedding-type deals, would they be grandfathered?
Well, the, if they were legally established, then the answer would be yes. Now, if somebody just happened to go out there and decided one day they wanted to do a wedding venue and we start getting complaints on or something like that, we go out there, they've never put their building up to code, they never had any kind of approval. We do have some of these that have been legally established in the county. I don't think you can go back on them and say, you have to follow these guidelines now. They would just continue to be regulated under their approvals that they received. Now, if somebody just kind of opened up shop one day and never got any approvals from the county on any of the work they're doing, then I think, yes, you could go back and say, you have to meet these standards once they're in effect. They couldn't say, well, we're grandfathered. We'd have to say, well, show us where you were approved. And if they weren't legally established, they wouldn't be able to do that.
So, if they're going to solicit it, it's not legally established, maybe they shouldn't run down?
Start talking to us, yes, sir.
Doug, have you had any community objections to some of those that are out there now? Just what's bringing this on? Have you had any objections at all?
I won't say we've had objections. I think we're just getting more and more phone calls about it and we're realizing that the ordinances that we currently have just really aren't in a position to address it properly. So, I'm not necessarily saying we're, there are a few out there that we know of and there's one in particular I can think of that I know has had, has got some issues with some of their neighbors. But that's not really necessarily what's driving this. What really is driving this is the fact that we're looking at what our current regulations are and realizing, based on the demand that's coming in and what these facilities are turning into, for lack of a better word, our regulations don't have anything in place to really effectively control them. So, that's what we're looking to do.
I hate to be splitting hairs here, but with your definition of event facilities provided with or without compensation, say my friend or my cousin wants to borrow my farm to have his wedding, am I suddenly a retreat?
If it's a one-time thing, you mean, you just borrow, they borrow your barn for one event because it's a family member, I'm not interested in regulating that. Now, if, you know, you let your cousin do it and the next weekend you let his cousin do it and the weekend after that, his best friend, and then the weekend after that, his best friend's girlfriend's brother-in-law, then, yeah, that might be, that might become an issue there.
Any other questions for staff? Doug, you want to come back with some adjustments?
Yes, sir. I don't think there's any need for a public hearing tonight at this point, just because I don't think Jennifer wants to talk.
Do we need to conduct one? Josh?
Not going to vote on it.
It's up to you. I mean, if you want to have it and we can make Jennifer come up here and talk, she'd probably be happy to do that.
But we'll cancel the public hearing for tonight and reschedule it for sometime in the future. Might be a good idea to, and maybe it's, maybe you've already got this in mind, but send the new proposal out to all the members a week or so before so that we can take a look at it and give you feedback so that maybe we can adjust it before we come and not have to do all those on the fly. So, just send it out a week or so in advance. Any other questions for staff? We had a similar discussion, Steve, at nine o'clock on our week before last meeting and we've had ten times as much tonight as we did then, so it's all good.
We'll bring it back to the day meeting, yes, sir.
This is?
Yes, sir. Well, we'll do our best.
You know, some of the things that we're looking at, I just kind of looked at our, you probably already have too, at our monthly report from the Building Codes Department and it looks like we're up by about forty percent in single housing permits from last year and that's probably going to continue as long as the economy stays on the incline, it's probably going to continue a little bit. Who knows, Mike, after, after ten years from now, that thing that's out there isolated and might not be isolated anymore and that's the way things tend to happen around here. So, it's good to get it right, get it right now. These things, I think, will be used more and more as the county grows, they'll be used more and more for political fundraisers and all kinds of things, I think, in the future. So, it's good to get them regulated and move forward with it. The public hearing that we had will go before the full county commission on Thursday, March the 12th, unless I read my calendar wrong, which I have a history of doing. But the one that we had, item number fifteen dash A zero zero four will come before the county commission in March and I think that's scheduled for Thursday, the 12th.
Great.
Any other staff comments?
Just one quick announcement, those commissioners who were lucky enough to be appointed to the budget committee for the planning commission, planning and engineering budget, I sent an email out last week, but just as a reminder, we're going to have a meeting February 17th, which is next Tuesday, at ten AM in the planning and engineering office. So, if you've got questions, we'll get you the, we'll get you the budget materials before then to look at, but you don't have to bring them with you, we'll have them printed out for you. But just wanted to make that quick reminder and again, thanks Charlotte for pointing out that Monday was a holiday. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, very good. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 23rd, nine AM, and that'll be in the planning mess, okay? Anything else? Thank you. We're adjourned.